And the word was made flesh and welcome among us. And we beheld his glory, the glory as of the only begotten.
I went to order at 6:30 and voted to go into closed session to receive legal advice regarding the rent stabilization ordinance. This was pursuant to annotated Code of Maryland State Government Article Section 10-5087 and 8. And now we are back in session and will begin with council comments or announcements. I wanted to just begin by letting people know that there was a meeting of the county council on Friday regarding the proposal that was made by the Management and Finance Committee to reduce the amount of the tax rebate payment that the city of Tacoma Park and the other municipalities in Montgomery County would receive. In that meeting, we were very happy to have a seven to one vote of the county council against that proposal and restoring the tax duplication payments that we were, that was put into the county executive's budget for Tacoma Park. Now, this is not, still not the amount that we would like to see, but at least we're back to the level playing field amount that we agreed, we, meaning all the municipalities, agreed with the county executive that we would start with for this year. There is also ongoing a negotiation team, the made up of municipal representatives and county representatives that will continue to discuss this and will come up with an agreement in time for next year's budget. But we are now back to where we thought we were in terms of this year's budget. So that is a, that is something that we're very pleased about. As I said, this is not everything that we want, but at least we are back where we thought we were for this year's budget. And certainly, thanks go to all of the county council members who supported us and particularly to Mark Elrich, who worked extremely hard and who knows this issue as well as anyone, to Valerie Irving, who was very helpful from the very beginning, and George Leventhal also had offered us a great deal of help and several, so did other, several others, council member. Dutchy Trachtenberg was the sole vote with us at, in the committee, so we very much appreciate the help from all of them. Does anyone else have any comments?
I just want to recognize the hard work of the Montgomery College Neighbors Advisory Committee and as the council knows, they have forwarded to our attention a resolution that they worked very hard to finalize and then voted to pass. I'm looking forward to their May 30th meeting as they reorganize and develop a work plan and review their mission and hopefully the council will see fit to make appointments before that May 30th meeting.
Pat Lovelace has been busy campaigning and protesting against the war downtown and again, sensitive regrets he's not able to make tonight's meeting.
Are there any other comments? We should also note that we will be meeting this Thursday evening also to continue our work on the budget. We are still on our twice a week meeting nights. All right, the next item is two proclamations that I would like to commit for the record. One offers condolences to the family and friends of former council member Janice Martin and the other is a proclamation offering condolences to the family and friends of Chief, of Chief Charles J. West, Jr., former chief of the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department. And I would also like to ask the council's agreement that the city make a donation to the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission Tree Fund, which is where the family of Janice Martin asked that donations in her name be made and maybe we could donate for a tree or part of a tree and maybe we can ask them to plant it along Cyber Creek Parkway because she worked very hard to get the hiker biker trail put in there and the park cleaned up. Would the council be agreeable to doing that? I'd seek guesses. And the next thing, I pulled the adoption of the minutes, there's something that I want the city clerk to research and take a look at, so we'll bring those up later. So the next thing on the agenda this evening is public comment period. This is the time set aside on the agenda for items that aren't on our regular meeting agenda. If you've got something on the regular meeting agenda, we'd ask that you wait till that item comes up and we'll have public comment opportunities at that time. If you want to come forward at this point to discuss anything on the work session agenda or anything else you'd like to bring before the council, I'd ask if you could identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Porter, council members, city manager Matthews, Clerk Carpenter. I'm Seth Grimes, 730 Willow Avenue. I'm here this evening on behalf of Safe Tacoma Incorporated, of which I'm president. You recognize some of our other board members who are here. Gail Fisher Stewart, Patty Getze, Andy Kellerman. Our District of Columbia board members aren't able to come this evening because of ANC Advisory Neighborhood Commission commitments. You had Sarah Green, who is our secretary here, two weeks ago to address you about Safe Tacoma funding. I wanted to give you an update. I will try to be brief about the status of the program and then make a request to you. The first update is good news. We have a check for $45,000 from the District of Columbia representing the first of two installments on their $75,000 commitment to the program. We have that check. It was based on a plan that was reviewed and accepted by Ann Grant, who is the Metropolitan Police Department's Director of Research and Resource Development Division, and Leanne Turner, who is the Metropolitan Police Department's Director for the Office of Fiscal Accountability, and Chief Lanier personally signed the Safe Tacoma Agreement. They named Commander Burton, the fourth district Metropolitan Police Department commander to act as the grant monitor. Our plan has always been that we would use our funding to hire a program manager and that in cooperation with community stakeholders and government representatives devise some crime prevention programs and implement them that focus on community activism and communications in the area surrounding the Tacoma Metro Station, but extending further into the community. To this end, we've now been building out our advisory board. The current members are Hilton Burton, the Metropolitan Police Department, fourth district commander, Roz Grigsby, the Executive Director of the Old Tacoma Business Association, Mark Hettings of the Tacoma DC Neighborhood Association and Tacoma Village Cohousing, Alan Henney, who's a Tacoma Park resident, Sam Kitner, who's a Tacoma Park Business and Commercial Property owner, Stacy Mills, who's a DC activist who was part of the Joint Anti-Crime Task Force of a few years ago, Chief Rakucci, we're pleased, has accepted our invitation to join our advisory board, Mr. Singh, I'm sorry, I didn't bring his proper name, he's known as Mr. Singh, the owner of S&amp;S Liquorson DC near the metro station, Brad Stewart, the Provost of Montgomery College, who spoke to you just a week or two ago and as you know, has a background as an academic in criminal justice matters, and Sidney Ulliman, who's representing Historic Tacoma, a DC resident. We've extended invitation to join our advisory board to a number of other individuals who will include Muriel Bowser, the new fourth, sorry, I guess it's fourth ward, what's it called in the district, council member, and Councilmember Austin Lane is welcome to join as are other members of the Tacoma Park Council. As a next step, we're planning a stakeholders meeting at Victory Tower on May the 30th to help in program design. We're applying for 501(c)(3) status with the district and we're arranging for alternative channels if we need them for funding. And however, we're still at an impasse. We've received cash from the District of Columbia, but Commander Burton, who is the grant monitor, has instructed us not to spend the money until we have clarification about the city of Tacoma Park's contribution. It's been our understanding all along and the districts that the District of Columbia cash contribution was a match to City of Tacoma Park cash contribution towards Safe Tacoma, a community focused crime prevention program looking at the Tacoma Metro area. And while conditions have changed with the hiring of new police chief, our understanding of the city of Tacoma Park's commitment to community focused program in cooperation with the District of Columbia has not changed. So we're here tonight to find out what we can, what additional information we can provide you. There's nothing pending so far as I know in my communications with city manager Matthews or Chief Rakucci in terms of informational requests from the city of Tacoma Park. We'd like to find out what we can do to move forward to get the city of Tacoma Park funding that will then release the district funding and allow us to launch our program.
We have this issue scheduled on Thursday.
This Thursday?
This coming Thursday. It will be done in conjunction with our discussion of the police department budget.
Okay, I won't be here myself, but I would hope that some of our, my fellow board members, I have a previously scheduled out of town conference, some of the other board members will be here to participate to the extent that you would wish that. This is public comment period. I've overrun three minutes, but at the same time, they haven't taken any time. If any of you would like to say anything, now's the time. All right, again, it is, I'll keep going for another 20 seconds. It, it has been the idea all along that it would be a community focused, a community participatory program, not a policing program, that there would be matching funding from the District of Columbia and the city of Tacoma. We appreciate your budgeting that money last year, now's the time to release it. Thank you.
Mayor Porter, if you could clarify for me, Thursday's meeting is about next year's budget and I think what we're talking, what the people of Safe Tacoma are talking about right now is this year's budget.
Yes, yes. It's my plan to do it because they're not unrelated, as you know. All of our money, if it's not spent in one year, it goes into the next year, so they're not unrelated issues.
Are you saying that this year's budget with the $75,000 in it has somehow been absorbed into next year's budget?
Not necessarily, no. Good. So it will come up for discussion on Thursday. So any of you all who want to be here for the Thursday discussion are welcome to be here.
That's, would you clarify, that's a work session or a what?
It's a, it's a work session.
So you will invite members of the board as appropriate to participate in the discussion because the public doesn't normally participate in work sessions?
That, that is correct. If you would like to be up at the table for the discussion of the Safe Tacoma part, I would, I would be happy to do that.
Yeah, I will not be here myself.
You all, I meant.
Gail Fisher Stewart, as you know, is, is spearheading our programmatic effort, but other members of our board, including potentially the district representatives, can address the budgeting issue and all of that. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, that was 7:30. Oh.
30, yes, 7:30 on Thursday, that's right. I don't know. About, yeah, I think it should be about eight o'clock is when we'll get to it.
It looks like it's the second item on the work session, so.
All right, any other comments? Anything else? Okay. All right, since there are no other comments, we can move on to the city manager's update.
Yes, I just had one brief item. I wanted to let the council know that last week I received a letter from the Chief Operating Officer of James F. Knott, providing an update, at least from their standpoint, on where they are and resolving the outstanding Phase One items. As Mr. Hamilton notes in his letters, there have been some items that James F. Knott has accomplished, but there remain a number of items that are still outstanding and some items that will probably require further discussion between the parties. So just wanted to share with you that we are still continuing to work on the outstanding Phase One issues. I think Mr. Hamilton's hope was that all items would be resolved by May 31st. Time will tell if that happens. It may be a little overly optimistic, but we'll certainly be working towards resolving these as soon as possible.
And we are still holding some money that they want to maintain their interest.
That would be correct.
Barb, would it be possible to get a written update on the various items and what remains to be resolved? I know you've given us the verbal bits and pieces.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that if it may not be this week, Councilmember Siemens with all the budget activity, but I'll certainly strive to have that for you next week.
Appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions for the city manager? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our regular meeting agenda. First item is a resolution recognizing National Police Week.
Move the resolution?
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Are there any council questions or comments? Should note that May 15th has been designated by the Congress as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week, the entire week as National Police Week. So we would be doing this consistent with other levels of government, which who recognize the contributions of the police in assuring the well-being of their communities.
On this resolution, I have to say, I have a really good feeling this year about the police department and our new leader in Chief Rakucci. I've received numerous comments from people who, you know, either I haven't heard from in the past or I've heard negative comments from, that his approach and openness to community discussion and very fast action on numerous fronts has been very well received and is a welcome change in addition to the city services we provide. So I'm, I'm very glad to recognize our police department. I appreciate our city manager's hard work to find the very best fit for our city and I just, I have, really have a good feeling about this.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Yes, I concur with what Councilmember Austin Lane said. I'm really pleased with the performance of our police department under Chief Rakucci's leadership and also with this resolution, I think it's important for all of us to take pause and think about the sacrifice that the law enforcement officers around the country are making on our behalf for our communities. And I think as we watch the news shows and see what we see on the street, it's, it's obvious it's a, it's a very dangerous job. It seems to be growing in danger and I think this, supporting this resolution is, is a good show of appreciation from this council to the law enforcement officers of our region.
I agree with what Councilmember Siemens just said and the, I'd just like to remind folks that the National Peace Officers Memorial is downtown. I don't remember which metro station, but it's right on that plaza in front of the National Building Gallery. And tomorrow, as every year, there will be a ceremony there honoring all of the fallen officers. And I've spoken at that ceremony and it's very moving.
Any other comments? All right, are there any public comments on this resolution? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution passes. The next item is a resolution recognizing National Public Works Week. And as we see our public works director walking in.
Good timing.
Exactly, on time.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded and this also recognizes all the efforts that our public works employees and all public works employees make toward the well-being of their communities. Are there any council comments or questions?
I'll just say about our public works department, they've been providing excellent service for many years and I also recognize that our new leader, I guess not so new as a director, certainly not new as a city employee, but I really do appreciate all the hard work and my son is at the age, two and a half years old, where it is just fascinating to watch the trash and recycling be picked up and the yard waste and he wants to be a, just like them. So thank you again and please pass on my thanks to your staff.
Terry?
Again, I appreciate the, the great work that our public works department does and it's, it is some of the most physically demanding work of, I think, any of the positions that we have within the city. And the men and women in the department work hard, they do a great job and I think it's an area that people don't take pause often to thank the workers and I think this is a good opportunity to do that, so thank you.
And just to follow up on where I thought Joy was going to go with her comments, does the public works department ever do like a big truck day for kids in Tacoma Park?
Touch a truck.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure.
I'd really like you next time.
Then spend several hours at touch a truck.
Yeah, I'm, is it? Well, I'd like an invite next time.
But you have a truck of your own.
I could, I could bring it.
It was on the weekly report.
Was it?
Yes, and.
Just because I know, okay, because my nephew and my grandsons have all been fascinated by having their little private touch a truck with mine.
Well, from what I understand, it's one of our more popular events for young children, so. Yes.
I too also want to echo the comments of our fellow council members. This weekend I was in California attending my niece's wedding and in Chico, California. And California in general takes their recycling and so on pretty seriously and I was talking about what we do in Tacoma Park and they were very impressed. Apparently a fair number of places in California that do, you know, nothing near what we, what we do. And so they were very impressed with that. And then I also heard during the week from several members of the ward who were very pleased with the resurfacing, particularly at Maple Avenue. They were really pleased to see that too. And that, I thought that went, given the kind of things that caused some delays there, actually turned out really nicely.
Anything else? Okay, is there any public comment on this resolution? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution passes. The next item is the resolution endorsing the application for the Safe Roots to School Grant.
The council is being asked to consider this evening a resolution endorsing the project that David Sewell's met with you last week to chat about in terms of continuing the Safe Roots to School program that has been funded in this current, but, uh, grant cycle. We're also looking at undertaking a comprehensive sidewalk study and installing sidewalk where, in areas where the need has been identified and then looking at trying again for the installation of a sidewalk along Piney Branch Road between Holly and, excuse me, Philadelphia Avenue. From a strategic standpoint, we're looking at breaking those three projects up into two separate applications. The one application being a continuation of the Safe Roots to School programming and the sidewalk study and installation, the second being the Piney Branch project. Preliminary costs at this moment, David is finalizing them, would be about $235,000 for the first project, which would be the programming and the sidewalk project. And then the cost estimates we've received from the State Highway Administration regarding the sidewalk on Piney Branch would be $1.5 million.
Would like to move the ordinance.
Okay.
Resolution again.
Are there any council comments or questions?
Could you repeat that figure for the cost of a sidewalk on Piney Branch?
It's pretty impressive, isn't it? The actual number is $1.483 million. David is working with the city engineer to see if those numbers are real, but those are the numbers that the State Highway Administration is working on when they look at that project. And that includes everything from excavating to a retaining wall, which is fairly extensive and frankly adds a lot to the cost as well as going through and doing some of the other infrastructure improvements.
And I see the, the little goof from the earlier cover sheet made it onto here, so can you remind me, that's to go from Philadelphia to which avenue, not Holly?
Grant.
Grant, that's what I thought, okay.
Yes, the other side of.
So that's one, two blocks.
Line one.
Yeah, almost like undergrounding utilities.
Of the two projects, probably the smaller one is a little more viable, but we thought we would ask them again. Who knows, maybe the second, third, fourth time around we'll be the chance.
Okay. All right, any other questions? It's been moved in second and any additional questions?
I don't have any additional questions about this, but I'm really glad to see that because I lived over on Hodges for a while and it was, it was impossible. It really was. I'm so glad they're putting a sidewalk there. Long overdue.
It's one of the folks that gets backed up on Philadelphia Avenue as the kids across from the street. It's a very dangerous situation.
It will, it will accomplish a lot of good things, really will. And I can see why it cost so much money because there's quite a bit of excavation that has to be done to make that with a good retaining wall as well.
Right. It'll be an engineering challenge.
It'll be an engineering challenge.
Okay, any additional questions? Okay, it's been moved in seconded. Any public comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the second reading of the ordinance that awards, that awards a contract for the study of the renovations of this room, the auditorium. Someone like to move it?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. This is the second reading. Does anyone have any additional comments, questions? I think we talked about this in work session and we talked about it in first reading. Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Again, as I look at the, the amount of money for feasibility study, we're talking over $28,000 to do a feasibility study and the result, the end product of this will not be a design nor any work done to actually change this room. I can understand the wide variety of topics that are going to be looked at in this feasibility study, but I remain concerned that this is not a, the best use of $28,000 that we could be doing for the city and for the community. I came today from working at the Franklin Apartments where the Manah Food Center handed out over 60 food packages to people of very low income who, who need the assistance to get from one month to another because of their low income. And I understand there are many more people in this community who could really benefit and need that, that type of assistance. I see the many young people on the street who need programs. Again, I think the $28,000 certainly will come out. Again, I think the $28,000 certainly will come out with an airtight feasibility plan for this room, but I think the money would be better put into something such as increasing the food program or providing additional programming for the young people that are on the street today. So, I would plan to vote against this.
All right, as since you had mentioned that again, I will mention again what I said the first time that I, this project came to us at the request of a number of Tacoma Park residents. The kinds of uses that could be made of this room if it were changed are great. I think it could serve a lot of uses within the community. The other thing is that we have learned that it is very useful to spend the money upfront to make sure that the council knows what things will cost and what we are getting and what we can use them for, rather than letting things show up in the middle of a building project. So, I am very much in favor of this. I think probably some of the young people will be using this for various purposes. I certainly hope they will. And I think this is a good thing to do and I'll be supporting it. Any other council comments? Any public comments? All right, seeing none. Since this is the second reading of the ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Councilmember Sniffer?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
The award for the contract is passed. The next item on the agenda is the second reading of an ordinance awarding the contract for the audit services and the financial report. Actually, we have two ordinances, I should have said. Let's do the auditing services first as we did the first reading.
Move.
Okay, this is for the contract for auditing services. And the staff has recommended Clifton Gunderson. Terry?
I have something different to say this week about this. As I recall, when shortly after City Manager Matthews joins the city as our city manager, she brought to this council's attention that our financial department had some serious problems, that our bookkeeping was somewhat behind and had issues that needed to be resolved. It was at that point that we hired the new finance director, Yvonda Brooks, and we've heard nothing but good news since her joining the city with improvements in the finance department and in fact leading us to receive an award for the condition of our finances over the period of time since she's been here. My concern is that we had this same accounting firm doing our accounting prior to Barb Matthews joining the city. And at no time did they do any more than have a note in one of the audits that we had some problems with our finance department. I think that the city auditor should be working at the sole direction of the city council and should be providing this council with a fair and accurate report of the condition of the finances of this city and the financial bookkeeping of this city. And that yet at no time during the period when our finance department was not doing well, did the auditor call that to our attention very explicitly at a council meeting here when he presented his findings. Nor at any time did they write a letter to this council to express concern, nor at any time did they ask for an executive session to describe the concerns outside of the view of the public. I think it's a, I don't think they've served this council well in the past. And that's why I would vote against having them serve us and do our auditing for us in the future.
Does anyone want to respond to that?
If I may, especially for maybe both members of the council or members of the community who aren't familiar with the situation that Councilmember Simmons is referring to, it would be accurate to say that when I joined the city, there were significant problems in terms of the timeliness of the city providing the auditors with the necessary records to do their work. An audit firm is not responsible for preparing the city's financial statements or providing auditors with the records. That is clearly the sole responsibility of the city. At that time, the city had tried a new structure in which it combined two positions to basically oversee both its city clerk functions as well as its financial systems. That did not work, as I told the council shortly after I arrived and we broke those positions apart. But the delays that occurred in that audit were, much to my chagrin, solely the responsibility of the city. We did not have our records in a condition which allowed the auditors to do their work and we were significantly late, as Councilmember Simmons has alluded to, in submitting the required reports to the state. That was in fact noted by the auditors, as I think many members of the council are aware, but maybe for the benefit of the community, there is a report that is referred to commonly as a management letter, which is an assessment, if you will, from the auditors in terms of anything they find during the course of their audit. The fact that the city's financial systems at that time and our records were in such poor shape in terms of the timeliness of our reporting was in fact noted by the auditors in a public report given to this council. So, I certainly don't say this with any great pride. It was certainly something that both Ms. Brooks and I have worked very hard to overcome. But I just want to make sure that everyone is clear on the responsibility of the various parties. And once again, the fact that we were late getting that information to Clifton Gunderson was the city's fault, not the auditors at all.
I realize that. And I think though, my expectation is that the auditor, you know, works to make this council aware of things. And I don't feel that just saying that the report was late carried the same weight. I think at the time that you joined the city, my estimate is that the majority opinion of the council was that we did not have problems in our Department of Finance and it was you who were able to bring that to our attention. And I appreciate that. This isn't, you know, criticizing what has happened within the department, but we're talking about the auditor. And I want to have the confidence in the auditor that when there are problems, that they will bring it to our attention. And I don't have that confidence in Clifton Gunderson.
Well, I think the city manager has answered that question. They did bring it to our attention in the way that they're supposed to. I don't think we can expect them to manage our city finances for us. Any other council comments? Have we moved this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Any public comments on this ordinance? All right, seeing none. This is the second reading of the ordinance. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Councilmember Sniffer?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Ordinance passes at second reading. Now, we're turning to the second of the two ordinances that executes a contract for the city's comprehensive annual financial report. Someone want to move this one?
Move, second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments on this ordinance? Are there any public comments on the ordinance? All right, second reading on this ordinance also, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Councilmember Sniffer?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
That ordinance also passes at second reading. Then the next one is the appointments to the Emergency Preparedness Committee. This is one new appointment and a reappointment, which we are not interviewing for because it's a reappointment.
Move the resolution.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any council comments on the resolution? Any public comments on the resolution? All right. We have moved and seconded, right? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. We are running a little bit ahead of schedule, but we will take a very short break and we have a lot of items on our work session agenda. So, just because we're running ahead of schedule, this means that we might actually get out on time.
Maybe.
Yeah, I wouldn't put large bets on that.
We are resuming with our budget work session. The first part of the budget that we're going to be looking at this evening is the recreation budget. Anybody want to begin?
Yeah, I'll just make some introductory comments. As I always do, I just try to give the council just a brief snapshot of the Recreation Department budget. Their budget is compared to the FY07 budget is up by approximately $89,000. And essentially, all of that is personnel costs. I did want to just remind the council, I think it's an avenue that you may want to discuss with Ms. Hayden this evening. As a reminder, there were two personnel-related items beyond those affecting all city departments that are reflected in my proposed budget. One proposal is to take the part-time hours for staffing the main reception desk, which is the responsibility of the Recreation Department from about 5:00 till close on weekdays and also over the weekend, to take those hours that are previously allocated among various staff members, aggregate them, and to create a full-time position that would be responsible for staffing the desk Tuesday through Saturday. And Ms. Hayden can certainly comment on that a little bit further. As I noted in my transmittal message to the council, there really is no change in the hours allocated to the position, but there would be an additional cost for providing fringe benefits. Along those same lines, as the council may recall, we added before-school care in this year's budget. Ms. Hayden, proposed, and I concur with that recommendation, that the city may want to give a little bit more focus to its before and after-school programs. And my proposed budget reflects, once again, the same number of hours, but the addition of benefits for a position to basically oversee our before and after-school care programs. It would be a 35-hour-a-week position, which under the city's structure would entitle it to benefit. So I would suggest this evening that you might want to spend a few moments talking to Ms. Hayden about those proposals. I also wanted to just call to the council's attention that there was some additional information that was left at your place at the dais this evening. It's the orange additional information sheet. These were some statistics that Ms. Hayden had given me, and I just neglected to include it in the agenda packet that went out last week, so I apologize for that. With that, I turn it over to Ms. Hayden and Mr. Clark.
What she said. Deborah Hayden, for those who don't know, Director of the Recreation Department. I'm pleased to introduce to many of you for the first time Gregory Clark, who has been with us since February. He's our Assistant Director. He comes to us from Prince George's County with 12 years' experience, progressive experience managing community centers and working a lot on team issues. And he is going to have a strong administrative role and an oversight function for our Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue, and also going to get the department up to speed with policies and procedures among 500 other things. But that's sort of the focus of his work. As Barb has already introduced, we are really changing only a few things in our budget. And I've been before the council many times, a few times this year, and we've discussed issues that have come up with the opening of the new community center. And I think that the council expressed an interest in addressing benefited positions. We have not added a benefited position since I began six years ago, and probably, Mr. Hobbs, you can correct me, several years before that. We have assumed many new functions in the city. The obvious one is the community center. And what we have found, and I've explained all of this, but I'll go over it again. When we opened the center, my idea was that we would have one full-time professional staff member work every evening, Monday through Friday. And so we'd assign the 2 to 10 shift. And if you've been here any night of the week, you've seen a different full-time staff member. That's created some issues in our department. We miss that person from 8:30 to 5:00 and beyond, when, you know, their regular duties sort of go unattended. And we've lost some continuity in our operations in the afternoons and evenings. So my recommendation is to hire one person who will function at the desk, sort of as the desk manager, from 2:00 to 10:00, Tuesday to Friday, and then Saturday from 10:00 to 6:00, when the building is open to the public. Now, the idea is that it's not any additional hours. I've just combined the part-time hours that would have been necessary. And as Barb said, we're just adding the benefits to that. The other position, and again, in review, was for our before and after-school program. When we moved over here to the community center, we decided to try a before-school program. We've had 15 participants, and I anticipate that that will grow next year. We opened the building about quarter of seven, so parents can drop their children off. And then we escort them to school at the Piney Branch Elementary and Tacoma Park Elementary Schools. So now that we have two programs, we also have an after-school program at the Recreation Center, which has been operating separately. And the way that evolved is that was one of the Governor's Office for Crime Prevention Grants that we received, I want to say, three or four years ago. And then that program was discontinued. But the city has maintained the program, given the strong interest from the children who live in the towers there. So we have a very healthy attendance of 30 children after school. Now, I don't suggest that this person is going to oversee all three programs day-to-day, but I do think having one person responsible for after-school programs in terms of programming, purchasing, it's a more efficient way to run the program. So again, combining hours with the idea that a benefited position that we could attract someone perhaps with early childhood or elementary childhood education experience, make it an appealing job for somebody rather than what it is right now, is this 19-hour position. And it's hard to fill that position because if we're seeking a professional person, they really have to have a second job. And so what happens is it's difficult to manage two jobs. And then now you throw in the morning. So that's really the emphasis for all our changes. We've done a lot of shuffling from one line item to another. And some line items appear like we're looking for a lot more money or a lot less. But there's been a lot of shuffling based on history and use. So that's my introduction. I don't know if anyone has other questions. I'm sure you do, so.
I wanted to pursue the issue, the personnel issue, a little bit more. First of all, I appreciate many of the changes that you've made. I think creating, creating or combining part-time positions into a full-time position, even though it does cost us for benefits, I think that you're right, it gets us sort of the opportunity to hire somebody with more professional credentials, and I think that's important. And I also very much appreciate the expansion that you've done of the before and after-school care programs. That was one of the needs that was identified that we weren't really filling. I think there's probably even more need out there than we could, than can possibly be filled even right now. But I think that that's a good place to do the expansion. So I don't have a problem with restructuring the existing hours. My question is more about the addition of the 1.71 full-time equivalents that have been added to the Recreation Department between the current budget and the proposed budget. Is that part-time people? I'm looking at the full-time equivalents chart that's in the budget overview.
Well, I shuffled for it, Mayor. One of the things that, as we were trying to figure out how to show that, you really have to drop down a little bit to the footnote. What you'll see is sort of kind of an offset, if you will, between the data that is sort of shown above the footnote and that below. If you look at the...
Right, it says the 11... Non-programmatic staff hours, 11, 9, and 10. So that's the difference between those two?
Correct. Essentially, you're sort of seeing an offshoot between, Mr. Hobbs, can you correct me if I'm wrong, between those positions that were counted as more seasonal because they tended to work more limited hours or weren't scheduled year-round versus those that are. And so you see a reduction in those positions that are showing for recreation. It's kind of an offset between the ones showing.
So, but I thought that since these were full-time, let me continue to pursue this a little bit. Since these are full-time equivalents, that we take the part-time people, at least I thought we were taking the part-time people, and accumulating them up to full-time equivalents?
I think Mr. Hobbs actually does sort of the FTE count. I was a little puzzled, Mayor, on the same line.
So if we're saying the seasonal and non-programmatic part-time staff hours, and you've got two figures for those, those are not included in the part-time, in the full-time equivalents?
That's correct.
No, not in the figure that's shown in the big chart, the footnote. And that's the way we've been doing it for a number of years. We show those full-time equivalents as a footnote. And that's in addition to the 9.71. But if you look at the bottom, you see...
Right, I noticed that. But the question that I had is I thought those were included. And I don't remember why I thought that, but I had this sense that in the previous year, I had asked the same question.
We have not changed this chart.
Okay, but I guess I'm puzzled by it as well because I thought when we were looking at the FTEs from the big chart, I thought that represented everybody. But essentially, what you're saying is our real full-time equivalents are... Right. And we've been doing this for five, 10 years? So...
We have not changed this method of counting.
Okay.
That I can remember.
Okay, so it isn't that when we went to this method for counting, it masked an increase in FTEs? It's been this way. You can compare year to year, but nobody has really noticed the footnote before.
I noticed the footnote, but I guess I thought it was included in the other one.
Nobody noticed it in the way in which it appears we should have.
Okay, well, that answers my question. Thank you. Anybody else?
Some others. Full-time equivalents, are real full-time equivalents?
I saw, Colleen first.
Thanks for coming down tonight. I have several things I'd like to discuss tonight. I guess I'd like to start out with the budget summary, but then have a lot of notes here, too. I think that at the core, the Recreation Department is something that everybody in the community really identifies with. I think that my experience in talking to my constituents during the campaign, after the campaign, is that the Recreation Department, for them, really embodies what they like best about Tacoma Park. It's part of their identity, and they see it as part of the commitment to youth and the commitment to diversity, the commitment to personal development. And those things are really important to people. And that's what makes them really value the Recreation Department. Sometimes that can set you up to be disappointed, too, when it's not the end-all, be-all of everything that you want it to be. And I have a lot of concerns about the Recreation Department. I feel like there's a lot of potential. I know that there's been a lot of changes. But right now, the Recreation Department is the thing that I hear about the most from my constituents. Now, up until we got the new police chief, mostly when people saw me at a gathering, they would come to talk to me about the Police Department. So it's good for the Police Department, maybe bad for you that now they're comfortable with the Police Department and you're next on the list because I can't go anyplace without somebody talking to me about the Recreation Department. I was raking my yard yesterday, and my neighbors came over to talk to me about the Police, the Recreation Department. I was at the PBS Book Fair last week, and people talked to me about the Recreation Department. Last night, last night or the night before, one of the Azalea Awards. I came to the Azalea Awards, and people came up to talk to me about the Recreation Department. And so I would like to share the things that people say with you, with a mind towards, you know, making some of the people's desires happen and addressing some of the things that people really have issues with in the way that things are happening. And I have some personal things as well. I want to say that people love the senior programs. Everybody who talks about the senior programs has something very nice to say about the senior programs, about the increasing numbers of opportunities and activities for the seniors. And I think that's terrific. Last year, I made some comment about my mom coming to visit, how she liked to play bridge. And the next day, the senior program director called me and asked me, "When's your mom going to be coming, and what kind of bridge does she like to play?" And that was very nice.
What a coincidence that was.
Yeah, what a coincidence that was. So, and I was just kidding, but she was like, "Yeah." So some of the key things that I hear about over and over again are about taking reservations, trying to get reservations for space in the community center, but also reservations for programs. And I actually got a lot more comments about that six months ago than I have like in the last 30 days. So maybe that's a sign that things are getting better, and that's good. But that was something that I got a lot of comments about. And one of the principal things that people are concerned about is being able to pay for space and programs by credit card. Is there something in the budget that's going to allow us to develop a credit card payment system this year?
Gregory has been researching different software packages. You know, we are just one department in the city. And I know that the administration is interested in looking at it for the whole city. We are looking at just our department. There are different capabilities, different programs. Of course, everything costs money. And I think what we, we hear that a lot, too. We hear that people would like to be able to pay, and we would like to be able to let them pay. I think that we have to decide when we analyze the different possibilities whether it's, if it's something that costs us more and we're paying for the convenience. I think that we could speculate that perhaps our participation would increase if it was more convenient. I wouldn't have any, you know, raw data to support that. But there are all kinds of options out there. And it's just a matter of whether the city wants to go that route. And I'm not sure, Barb, you might want to speak as to whether that the department would go forward without the rest of the city.
I would just like to echo what Deborah said. It's been, I know, an issue some of you have brought up to me in the past. I think in talking to Ms. Brooks, we think that perhaps if our stormwater fees could perhaps be paid with a credit card, that might help our compliance rates, which is the council, we talked about, I guess, last Thursday. Given the minimal amount of money, that's become very problematic in terms of our collection efforts. It's something we've been actively researching. I think certainly some of the work that Deborah and Gregory have been doing has been very helpful in terms of the discussions that we've had on the subject. I think as we were to move forward, I think there are some policy issues that we would probably want to come back and talk to the council about. Depending on the systems, you know, I think many of us know this just from our own personal experience, some credit card companies charge up to 4% kind of fees for using that. There may be an opportunity to either offer our residents more convenience, but there's also perhaps a possible downside that we may also experience a loss of revenue. So I think those are all issues as we continue to discuss this that we probably bring back to the council and want to get your input on. But I think we certainly have heard the message from both the council and from our residents that this is something that they would like and would be a very convenient option for them to pursue rather than coming in and writing checks or paying with cash.
I'd just like to add, currently, there are several ways that you can pay. You can do it by mail with cash, I'm sorry, with a check, or money order. You can do it in person, you can put it in a drop box, but that would have to be a check or money order. So it is, it's not the most convenient method. To me, it would seem the easiest thing is to put it in the mail, and to write a check. But what we also have found is there are different segments of the community who do not have checking accounts.
I don't have a checkbook. I have a checking account, but I don't have a checkbook.
So we're, we hear you, and we hear it often. So we're certainly interested in exploring that option.
There is funds in capital through this budget. Funds whatever you decide to offer, and software, recreation, and online banking.
Okay, well, you know, I worked in two big institutions, the University of California and the City of Oakland. The City of Oakland in the Recreation Department. And our small division, small in the terms of Oakland, is probably bigger than the City of Tacoma Park's full Recreation Department. But, you know, we got together a credit card program for the Marine Sports Area. It took us about 30 days, and we made the people pay the three... If they chose the convenience of the credit card, we made them pay the add-on. When I worked for the University of California, I worked in the housing office. And we put together a credit card program, and the fee then was 1.8%. And it was the same thing. And there were some staff training issues to it. And we had a smaller staff than you did. So I can see that your issues of who's going to be able to... So I can see that your, your issues of who's going to be able to accept it is going to be more complex. But I guess what I would like to say is that, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I mean, this has been such, such an issue that I keep hearing about that I personally would think that it would be worthwhile for the Rec Department to go forward with the credit card mechanism. You know, Costco has it. Does the City have a Costco membership? You know, they have a whole mechanism. You set it up like a business. It's, I don't think it's that, that bad that we, that we couldn't make it happen. It's such a convenience for people. And it is something that I've heard about recently as well. Okay, online access to registration and reservations. Is there something in the budget to, to move forward with that this year?
It is in the capital budget.
For this year?
For '08, yes.
So it's going to happen this year?
With your, with your approval, yes.
Okay, okay, great. That's good news. Other key elements, customer service issues. I'll say a little bit about that now. Staffing of the front desk, staffing at the front desk has gotten much better. I don't know who the, the young man is that's been out there frequently on Monday nights, but just more frequently in the evenings. I'm sorry, I don't know his name.
I assume that's where you're going to the full-time staff position for the front desk.
Richard, I think that's his name.
So I think that's the, that's the...
Richard has greatly improved your customer service. He's friendly, he's outgoing, he looks up at people when they come to the desk. He smiles when he talks to them. He speaks in, in clear speech patterns and doesn't mumble. He's never eating or talking on the phone when I go up to the desk, even when I'm coming around the corner. So Richard has been a great improvement at staffing the front desk. The answering of the phones has gotten better in the last 60 days, I would say. Much friendlier, much happier, much clearer. People are much less likely to say, "Huh?" when I ask to speak to Sarah Danes or the Public Works Director. And another customer service issue is about what you're doing when you're in uniform. You know, some of this stuff is just easy. If you're not working, but you're in uniform and you're in the teen room and you're playing on the equipment, or if you're not working and you're in uniform and you're in the kids' area and you're playing on the equipment, somebody's going to call me and gripe about it. They don't like that. I think, you know, if you're in uniform, you're on the job. If you go off, maybe they could go in the restroom and turn their T-shirt inside out so it doesn't say Tacoma Park Recreation Department on it anymore, but something, because it generates complaints. And I think that's a pretty standard kind of customer service thing. In most places that I've worked, that's been the issue, you know. If you're a customer coming in, you can't tell if they're on duty or not, if they're in uniform. So that's really frustrating for them and I think unnecessarily makes us a target. So another issue that people are talking about is prioritizing our residents, either by early registration periods or by reduced funding or reduced costs. Now, one of the residents complained to me, said that she was really upset that there's only $5 difference between being a resident and being a non-resident. And I'd like to talk about that later, but...
That's actually, I think, a different issue. The council discussed it one time and we will have to take it up again, but I don't know that that's part of what we're going to be talking about at this point.
Well, I think it's a budgetary issue, how we budget. I mean, I would hope that there's some relationship between the income that we take in and what our budget looks like. And so I would think that absolutely, you know, what we charge and what our cost differential is and what our cost recovery plan should be an integral part of how a budget is developed. I can't tell what that is because that information is not transparent in this budget. I would like to know what it is. I'm sure you can't tell me off the top of your head, but it would be good to know what, what that is. But that's something that's kind of reflected in what people say. They, they feel like they pay a lot to be a Tacoma Park resident and they, and they, they, like I said, you know, the Rec Department is what they really see as reflecting the city and what the city is all about. And they also want to see their status as residents reflected in the way that they pay for it and the way that they register for classes.
So they're not complaining that the fees are too high, just that they don't want to pay so close to the non-residents? Is that, have you heard that the fees are too high?
No one has ever complained to me that the fees are too high.
Can I just get a quick clarification on that?
Yeah.
Is it, is it, uh, I'll ask it a different way. For the, how are residents of Montgomery County who do not live in Tacoma Park seen in the fee structure? Do they pay the same as Tacoma Park residents? Do they pay the non-resident fee?
They pay the non-resident fee. Anybody who doesn't live within the city limits pays a non-resident fee. They could be from Alabama and they pay the same non-resident fee.
And, and we talked about that when we talked about the rental fees for the building.
Yes.
At one point, and I, and I assume the issue is the same.
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to programming. Before and after care, I think, are vital programs. I have some concerns about program leadership. Can you tell me who in this chart is the aftercare program staff member?
You want me to name the person?
That would be good. Who is it?
Just look at the chart. I have a lot of papers here, thank you. Before and after school programs, that's Carrie Antoszewski.
Okay, and that's her sole focus, or does she have other programs as well?
No, she's in charge of summer camps, she's in charge of spring break camp, uh, the, um, the brochure she's doing, she does programming, special events, and fun day trips, and...
All right, so then are there sub-people below that?
Yes.
Okay, is there a sub-person below her for before and after care programs? That's the new position that's being created, right?
For the before and after, yes. Right now, we have a coordinator who's responsible for the aftercare program here and we have one up at the Recreation Center.
So we do have a coordinator for the before and after care program?
For the aftercare.
For the aftercare, but not for the before?
We haven't combined it. We only have 19 hours, so...
Right, so is that person part-time, the aftercare coordinator?
Yes, 19 and a half hours.
Okay, okay, great. Then I would have to say that I think it's great that we're going to add a full-time benefited person and I hope that before and after care continues to expand and improve with active development by a program coordinator. Teen programs, we have a new teen program leader. What's this person doing?
Carla Kelly. She's working with Greg. He can update you. I think we have submitted a program summary for the teens.
But what's, what's the value that's been added since this person has joined the staff?
She just started in... Late March, yep. She is planning our entire after-school program, our summer program, in the next, next year for the fall.
For teenagers?
Yes.
So we're going to have a specific after-school program for teenagers?
Yes.
That's separate from the afternoon edition type thing?
Yes.
Great.
It is on, it's the City of Tacoma Park Teen Program. It gives you an overview. It's in your handout, yes.
And that's, those are, that's a new thing? I saw like the Friday nights and...
Yes, a lot of this is new. Some of it is popular and we're keeping, keeping it in our schedule. We're just putting it all in one, under one person.
Okay, so it's just going to be better, clearer coordination? I see that there's a teen newsletter. Maybe when we redo the auditorium, we can expand that to do some more multimedia communications with, with the teens and partner with the library. Okay. Extreme Horizons. I have a lot of concerns about this Extreme Horizons camp. It seems to me like this is a high-cost, low impact, low-impact camp. You gave us some specific numbers about the Extreme Horizons camp. Not quite. For example, on the one that says Recreation Department Fiscal Year '08 Budget Discussion Items, it looks like there's a six-to-one ratio for a teen camp, which is typically a ratio that you have for kids who are five, six, seven years old. So it's a high staff ratio, but if you only got 13, you have to have two, two staff members, so that's an issue.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Clay, I'm not sure where you're looking.
It's the item, Deborah, that was in the original packet.
Original packet.
Part of the discussion items.
But the registration is $180 a week for residents, $200 a week for non-residents. There were 30 unique participants out of 84 slots. About a third of the kids were there for half the sessions and half the kids were there for multiple sessions. It says that the average participant cost for a trip is $35. But you take almost four or five trips a week. Is it $35 per trip?
It's the average.
For every day?
Yes.
Per participant?
Right. Mondays, we are in camp. We do orientation and we experience the community center. They make a T-shirt, they learn the rules, they learn the schedule, they play introductory games, things like that. They do a field trip every day. That's what we, it's a trip camp.
Right.
That's what it is. And, and the parents are aware of that and it's really actually quite popular with the kids. I mean, the ones that return, it's very difficult to attract that age group, especially in the summer. We are showing, in our plan for the teen programs, we're showing an alternative to that for kids who are not interested in going out of camp every day. And Greg, if you want to speak to Carla's summer program that you two put together, what the plan is?
Yes, I can speak to it. This summer, we're planning on having a drop-in program, again, for young people that do not participate in our Extreme Horizons camp. During this period, young people will participate in arts and culture, such as getting involved in the mural project.
A what project?
A mural project.
Mural, mural project.
They'll participate and, and learn pro audio in our music pro class in our music lab. They'll get life skills, workshops, job readiness. They have social recreation programs and activities and sports and games. They also will perform a service learning project and environmental education and stewardship programs. So this will be a drop-in program. It will be free for the young people and we're offering that as an alternative to the Extreme Horizons camp.
And what age group is it?
This will be for six through 12 graders.
Okay. I don't support the Extreme Horizons camp. I think that $35 a day for the trip cost is really expensive. And I think that it's more about pure amusement than what I think of as program missions, which are recreation, enrichment, personal development, participant development. I think that if you got to travel an hour to three hours to get to an amusement park where you're there for four hours and you've got kids who all kind of have different ideas about what to do at an amusement park, and then you got to get back in the van and come back, that, you know, I don't think that that is a useful, that's not a, um, a wise use of our recreation resource dollars. It's not that, or, you know, Dave and Buster's. It's not that I object to whitewater rafting or the beach trip, the ropes course, skating, you know, some of the more traditional stuff, but to go to an amusement park and some of them that are quite a ways away, one and two times a week, when the kids that you've got that are participating in the program, you know, some of them participated for three or, or four weeks, that's, that's a lot of...
And they keep coming back.
Yeah, so you're saying that this program is very popular?
Yes.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
No, I'm, I'm...
What I'm saying is that there are 30, there are 30, 30 children who are unique contacts in this program. And, you know, you've got kids that are repeating in half of the sessions. One, one amusement park trip or two amusement park trips as part of the rec program over the year, that's, that's fine. But this is, this is a lot of money to spend to take the same kids to an amusement park over and over again. And when you're spending three to six hours a day in a car with a kid, and when I asked you guys about that, the response that I got back was that the staff considers that bonding time? I, I can't, I can't imagine that, that that's a valuable use of our resources to have those kids, you know, cooped up in a van. I mean, I can't see that as bonding time.
Can I suggest that we not try and parse out what the individual camps will do on a day-to-day basis? If you're opposed to the program, I, that's fine, but I don't really want to spend a lot of time talking about exactly what they should do week by week.
I guess the question I would have with that program is, are the majority of the participants in the program paying the tuition or the fee? Or are they scholarships?
We have...
The fee is $180, which only covers the actual admissions.
Eight children, occupied 24 slots. Keep in mind, a slot is a spot on the bus, so that's roughly a quarter. Well, maybe I'm not doing my math right. A little less than that of the children, our scholarship children. I'd like to point out that it's 40 hours for the week. And when you break the cost down per hour, kids are getting supervision and activity. They're learning new, perhaps new life skills. I mean, they might really like caving or whitewater rafting. And they're getting to go to places that some of their families are not able to go to. They're not able to take them there. And it's, it breaks down to about $4.50 an hour. And any of you with, out there with children know what it costs to get a babysitter per hour. So in our estimation, it seems like, you know, it, the focus is definitely on recreation. My, my personal opinion is that in the summer, the kids need a break. They need to kick back, they need to have fun. They're scheduled all year round with enrichment and classes and music lessons and, you know, whatever they do. This is a fun time for them and that's been the focus. We haven't tried to make it heavy-duty enrichment. That's not been our goal. So if it's not coming off that way, I mean, that's why.
$4.50 per person, does that include all of your labor costs and the transportation costs and the admission costs?
It includes transportation, all the admissions, all the supplies. We haven't broken down our full and part-time staff in any of these programs. We, we haven't...
So there's no staffing in the 4.50?
Well, no, but they are supervised. Our, our people are full-time staff, so they're going to be receiving a paycheck regardless.
Sure. I feel like this is a one-and-a-quarter-million-dollar budget. And I think that the, the issue of what happens at the program level is important. And it's been made pretty clear that the City Council doesn't have other input into this other than if the mayor puts it on the agenda for a policy review or here at the budget time. We don't have a line item budget on these things. The, a lot of the stuff is, is, you know, in three categories, which, you know, is, is about the city administrator, not about, you know, you two. But, but the categories, you know, are personnel costs, supplies, services and charges, and miscellaneous, of which, you know, $75,000 of this 1.265 million budget is miscellaneous. And I feel like as part of my responsibility as a council member, this is, this is my opportunity to weigh in on what we're doing and how what's happening in the budget and what's happening in the program is reflecting my constituents' interests. And I, I mean, I just, I can't see it. I didn't, I lived 10 miles from Disneyland and I didn't go to the amusement park that much when I was a kid. It's, it just seems like, you know, for the money, there are a lot of things, there are a lot of interesting and exciting things to do with kids in this group. And I hear you talking about a lot of them. And I'm excited that we have a new teen center director who's going to be able to develop more teen-oriented programs. I think the whitewater rafting is, is a great program. And, and going to the amusement... And going to the amusement, amusement park once or twice during the summer, that would be a great kind of a reward. But it just seems like a program that's built around, you know, pure amusement. And what I'm saying is, I would like to see it more reflect some leadership development, some participant development. I mean, I expect more from our kids. I think more of our kids than to think that, you know, all they care about is going to the amusement park day after day after day. That would get boring for anybody. And, and I think we can offer them better, and I think that they probably expect better than that from us. If it's going to be a program where kids participate for one week out of the summer, then going to the amusement park twice during the week wouldn't be a big deal. But when you've got, when it becomes kind of your de facto summer program for the whole summer, for a group of kids, then we have to be more creative and imaginative about how we look on this opportunity of this summer to develop these kids.
I would be interested in having the kids occupied doing something that they enjoy doing. I, you know, certainly, some of the things here sound very educational. The Folk Life Festival, the Science Center, baseball games, mountain biking, all of those things sound very educational. And I think the most important things that we should do is keep the kids off the streets and occupied during the time that they're not in school. And if this does it, I'm happy with it.
Yeah, I have a group of constituents who sees the Recreation Department purely as gang diversion. And their, their ambition for the Recreation Department is to keep the kids off the street while they're not in school. My ambition for the Recreation Department is much greater than that. And I'll leave it at that. This is, I'm going to talk about this program?
Nope.
This is something I know something about. You're not going to hear me talk about a lot of the budget, other budget issues, but this is my thing that I'm going to talk about.
But, but just let me suggest that the position as council members is not to run the programs. Position of council members is to set the overall direction for the budgets and to sort of set the policies for the program, for the departments, and not necessarily to pick the things that the camps do on a daily basis. If you really have some concerns, and I certainly, you know, take those concerns seriously, my suggestion would be that you sit down with the city manager and/or the Recreation Director and talk these things through.
Then I'll get accused of micromanaging. I've been told that this is my opportunity to impact what happens in the Recreation Department.
But I don't know that it's not micromanaging if you do it from the dais.
There's nothing, then, that I could vote for in this budget if I can't get more information about what's happening on a more specific level. I feel like, you know, the information that's available in the budget is, you know, how, how can you make any impact on the budget, given the limited information that's available here and the way that it's, the way that it's presented? It's, it's a trap. It's, the information is too general.
Many years ago, we used to have budgets that would have line items, like for office supplies, and the council would get all bogged down in how many paperclips a particular department was using. And it wasn't very helpful. And I agree. I mean, I think some, you run a risk if you go too much into the weeds, and you run a risk if you get too general. And so I would, you know, welcome specific suggestions. I agree with the suggestion, and this has been made before, that, you know, we have more specific revenues and expenses for broken down in finer, in finer units for the Recreation Department, and that's certainly a concern that I would agree with. I think what's holding us back at this point is the Recreation Department doesn't have the data gathering and sorting capacity right now. And certainly, if we wanted to give the Recreation Department the money to do that, I think that they could probably do it. And I think that's a useful thing for the council to do. You know, we have set certain guidelines for the Recreation Department, such as, you know, making money for the adult programs and not for the kids' programs. We're willing to subsidize the kids' programs. And I think those kinds of things are very serious, and I, and I take very seriously the kinds of things that you're, that you're saying. I just, I'm not sure that as a legislative and policymaking body, that a useful thing for us to do is to try and come up with suggestions for the particular subjects that individual programs should take up on a daily basis.
I remain concerned that we're having this discussion in May of nineteen, or two thousand and seven, showing my age, I guess, in May of two thousand and seven, when we're trying to agree to a budget for next year, which is going to have to be settled by end of June, when we had the same discussion last year of wanting to, council members wanting to discuss and agree to what we would like to see in our budget documents and what level of detail we'd like to see in the budget documents, and yet that never got scheduled for discussion during the year and time for the city manager and the staff to prepare a budget that provides the information that we all can agree to, feels comfortable, we're making these decisions. I think that, you know, having an adequate time reporting system is part of what's needed so that Deborah and the other department heads have the data that's necessary to tell us what programs are costing and, and allow us to make the kinds of decisions that Councilmember Clay is, is mashing at.
And, and I don't think that you've heard me say, "I want you to do whitewater rafting," or "I want you to do this." I mean, it's, it's a concern that, that relates back to my observations, the observations of other people about how we fulfill the mission and how, you know, how we're spending our money to do that. I, I think, you know, when I first became a council member, most of the calls I got were about lead pickup. And I think a lot of people get touched by the Public Works Department every day. But I really feel that your department that you run is, in many ways, just, it's the most important department to the constituents. Yeah, I can't emphasize that enough, and that's why people talk to me about it, you know, for better or for worse. You're very important to the people in my ward, and what you do is very important to the people in my ward. And a lot of them acknowledge that, you know, their kids are past the time of the Recreation Department, but it's about how they see this city's broader role in building community. And, and this is, this is what I've been left to, is kind of my, my opportunity to interact. I would much prefer to sit down and talk to people in their office, but that doesn't really seem to be welcome. I would much prefer to be able to, you know, look at the, the individualized items and really be able to tell from what's happening in the budget, what we're doing, what the, you know, what are the performance outcomes. But I can't do that because the information isn't available to us. And I think that our city manager, who's been here for a few years, has just done a stellar job of getting all the kinds of things together, making the financing work, making the community center come in line in terms of all of the different issues that were happening with that, and really getting the city in shape. And I know that in the, in the near term, that we're going to have better tools to measure these things. But right now, this is all I have. This is my opportunity to talk to you about it. You want me to continue, or you want me to leave?
I'm on my call.
You're certainly welcome to, to continue. I guess the suggestion that I would, I would have is that it's probably more useful. I mean, for example, I'm not sure that, sort of at the next level of generality, that I would necessarily agree with you that the recreation programs should all be educational, there shouldn't be anything that's purely fun.
I didn't say that.
I think purely fun is good. Well, and then-
I believe the words I used were recreation, enrichment, and personal development.
Well, I'm happy with things that don't necessarily include personal development, but are just fun for the kids and get them to come to the programs in the summertime. I think that's, that's a good thing, too.
Yeah, that's the recreation part.
You know, I would like to say two things. Councilmember Clay, you've used the term two field, two amusement parks a week, and that's not an accurate term. We, the short week where we don't meet on the Fourth of July, we do two field trips to an amusement park because we feel like the kids are getting short-changed. The other weeks, it's one amusement park a week. I just wanted to clarify that. The other thing is that, you know, you said that you didn't really believe that being on a bus, you know, I would say it's certainly not my idea of fun. You will note that I am not one of the staff people in the bus for six hours. But it is amazing. Our new teen manager went on, on one of the amusement park trips, and she spent all day. It was something like ten hours. And yes, she now knows the kids on that trip. It was a very valuable time for her. She has bonded with them, and that does set the groundwork for the next thing that she wants to do. And that's a lot of what our philosophy is. Let's get to know the kids, let's give them, give them something they want so that we can give them something they need. And it's not, that all the kids aren't going to respond that way. Our goal is to reach all of the kids. If we don't, we've reached some of them, and, and we would consider that success. So I don't want to minimize the importance of the contact hours that we have with these children.
If I can echo what Deborah's saying, in research, all research in regards to youth development, the number-one thing that youth are looking for from, from us are positive relationships. That's the number-one thing when you go to researching youth development, what they're looking for from adults, is positive relationships. On those trips, during that time, they are developing positive relationships with adults. That's the bonding time that Deborah was speaking of.
When they're not listening to their iPods.
Yeah, I, I haven't gone on any of the trips, so I'm not sure.
But you will be, Greg.
Yeah.
I took my eight-year-old nephew to Disney World, and I learned a great deal, this was many years ago, obviously, because he's no longer a great dad. And I learned a great deal about my nephew, including the fact that he is not afraid of heights, while his aunt is.
Well, it's funny, it's sort of anecdotal, but we had a girl on the trip who went to, I think it was King's Dominion, who is deathly afraid of roller coasters. And Carla said, "Why did you come on this trip?" And the answer is, you know, she wanted to be a part of it. She wanted to be connected. So it's not always about the, the actual event. That's the last thing I'll say about that.
Well, now that we've degenerated into defending the time on the bus, seniors, senior programs, one of the comments that I've gotten from people is that, we've got a lot of people who are aging in place in Tacoma Park, and that maybe we could do something to provide some support for that, and including some workshops about aging in place. And I'm actually meeting with a constituent tomorrow night to talk about reverse mortgages. And those are the kinds of things that seniors are facing, and they're not, you know, they're not recreation, but, you know, it's the kind of thing that they want to have information on, and, and could really help them stay and be a part of the community.
We, we welcome any contacts or topics or people you know in the community who might like to present something to the seniors. We do have many workshops for the seniors, health-related and lifestyle choices and things like that. So we certainly welcome that.
Departmental professionalism has definitely gotten better over the last several months because of the new guy on the desk, the phone service, fewer people talking on the phone when you approach the phone. Nobody, nobody, I haven't seen anybody eating on, on duty in four months. But tonight, when I came in, there were three girls in the game room, kind of hanging around and talking while a couple of kids were banging the ping-pong paddles on the, on the table. Couldn't tell that there was anybody in the teen room. And so maybe there's still a little bit of work to do there. I already talked about getting more budgeting information, and I would like to come back and have a conversation with the Rec Department about, about further developing the mission of the Recreation Department, having more transparency to the council and to the people who participate in the recreation programs about things like, you know, staffing ratios and, and certification and things like that. I would like to see a clear cost-recapture policy and, and have that come back before the council. I would also like to see us have some clear scholarship ratios and maybe develop a kind of a Friends of the Recreation that will actually raise scholarship money for our scholarship program. I don't know if the Tacoma Foundation would be interested in having an auxiliary arm that does that or not. I know a lot of places, when they collect their recreation fee, there's a box you can check to donate a dollar or five dollars to the scholarship program. And I know a lot of people in the city would, would give money to a scholarship program. Do we have a mechanism for that now, or do we just pay for it out of our city budget?
We have accepted donations before, separate from the registration for people.
Do we solicit them?
No.
So, you know, I think that that would be a really worthwhile undertaking. And the other thing that I want to say is that I hope that we use our opportunity of having a Recreation Department, having the ability to hire people, to have counselor and training programs, to do some job development and some leadership development with our kids that are in our junior high and high school ages, and to be kind of thinking about that, thinking about, the Tacoma, the Tacoma Foundation has done some micro-enterprise grants this year, you know, to have a, a micro-enterprise program for, for teens that is, is, is part of what the Recreation Department does. Is that, to me, that would be totally worthwhile, funding something like that. And I think it'd be very valuable to our, our community, and is what I mean when I say, you know, I'm interested in something more than just taking the kids off of the streets for the time period that, that we're driving them around town and taking them to different places, but to, to really have some kind of development that's, that's exciting for them. There's a, there's a community college out in western Maryland that I wish, I wished had been around when I was going to community college, that, it's a two-year recreation program, you know? Every day, they go to college and they go whitewater rafting and rock climbing and do all these different kinds of things. There's a lot of opportunities in recreation in the area and around the world. And one of the big things that I was able to raise money for with the Sailing and Science Program was that kids go through the program and they get familiar with these different professions, and they don't have to become experts in them, but they get familiar with them, and they're, you know, it, it's a multi-billion-dollar industry, recreation and recreation products. And it's not just being a camp leader, but there's just all kinds of things that are related to it. And, and that's something that I think we can really connect the kids with, to think beyond just going and playing the basketball game, but what can you do with this? Like, how can you make a career out of this? You know, it doesn't mean that you're in the NBA, but there are a lot of ways to connect these kids in to the broader community. And I would like to see the Recreation Department do more of that. Thank you for everything that you do.
Can I just follow up on a couple of things? I think Councilmember Clay's idea about soliciting people to, to contribute to scholarships is a great idea. And I think, you know, I'd love to see that, that develop. I also want to second her concern about the teen programs, and I notice here that we've got only ninety memberships in the teen room. I mean, one of the things that we have been talking about for a number of years is, is pulling more teens into the Recreation Department. And I'm very pleased to see that you have that background and that we've started developing some things. And I wonder if you could talk a little bit more about the, about, you know, what we're going to be doing to bring teens in? I'm the person who complains every year about the outreach program, and, you know, I see that we've done away with the outreach director, the outreach, the remaining outreach person. I don't have a problem with that if we're going to continue to try and bring the most vulnerable kids in, many of whom are teens. And so I guess the question would be, are we going to be doing something that will do what the outreach person was doing in terms of bringing in vulnerable teens?
Yes, we are planning a, we do have a very good marketing plan that we have discussed. We're going to be reaching teens, actively going out to bus stops, passing out flyers and recruiting young people. We're going to attend schools, PTA meetings at schools as well to get to the parents. We do have some innovative ways that we're going to reach them as well, through text messaging.
That's hard work.
And once we get the capability, we're planning on getting their emails, email addresses and emailing them different flyers and programs and opportunities that we will be having within the Recreation Department, along with your, your traditional ways of marketing through the newspaper and different flyers and things like that. So we could have some things that we're going to try and, try and bring as many young people as possible to the community and Recreation Center.
If I had to list the one thing that I think that we really need to work on, that we haven't yet accomplished, that we need to work on really hard next year, is bringing those teens into the program. I mean, I think we've done a great job in expanding the before and after-school programs, but we have- but we have a ways to go in terms of bringing the teens in.
Right.
Sorry, Terry.
Well, I just want to remind you, Mayor, that ninety, that's probably a bigger number now. We've just really had our teen manager for a couple of months, and she does have a plan, somewhat like bribery.
Well, I saw the summary here, but I think, what I would say is, you know, next year, around this time, I'd really like to see many more teens involved in the program.
It will be, I'm confident.
Sorry, Terry.
Okay, I thank you, and I thank you for your patience. I don't know if you want to take a break now, or if you're ready to keep on going?
No, we're ready.
I thank Councilmember Clay for her questions, and I, I think it really highlights the need that I'm feeling, for the council to maybe have, after the budget time, additional discussions about, you know, what do we see as the mission of the recreation department, and kind of refining that, and talking about some of the issues that we talked about in the past, reviewing those, such as the fee structure, and some of the other things that I think would make your job easier, because you wouldn't be trying to guess what we're thinking, and trying to hit it, but we could, we could be clearer about what we expect from you and your department. I thank you for coming tonight, and for your budget. I wanted to highlight a couple of things that I noticed. You know, we've seen some growth in the use of this building over the last couple of years, and I thank you for that. I think sometimes when we see some of the struggles, and the things that we're not where we want to be, it's easy to focus on those, rather than, you know, complimenting you for the many steps that you've taken to get us to where we are today. You know, I certainly think, I look at the participation level of the after-school program, and it's pleasing to see that, you know, so many families have someplace for their young people to come after school, and it's not to our library, it's not to the grounds outside the building, but it's here in a semi-controlled environment, hopefully totally controlled. And again, the participation level in the classes is, has grown, and I'm glad to see that. I see that we have additional capacity. Many times I come here, in the afternoons and the evenings, I see that we still aren't 100% booked, which means that there's much more we can probably be providing to the community, and so I look forward to that. But I think the art program especially, have been some of the most popular things at the community center. I know that you received a suggestion from one person, that maybe using one of the meeting rooms for art. An art program might be a way to expand the art offerings, and that seems like a reasonable thing to consider. I don't want to get into trying to program things, I think that, again, if we could have a session at the council to try to provide you some direction on what we see your mission to be, I think that'll be helpful. One item that I want to get into a little more detail, and it came up, you know, during your presentation a month or so ago to the council, was the, I think at that time I called it the, said I didn't realize we were the Walmart of municipalities, because of the way we cut our hours to nineteen and a half hours, so that we don't have to pay benefits on our staff. Again, I have real problems with that philosophically. I appreciate, and again, this gets back to the mission, I'm not criticizing you for doing that, I think it's, you know, the council, and what we want to do, and what we want you to do. But how many people do you have that are working part-time at this point?
If you include our summer staff, I'm going to take a stab and say it's probably thirty people, if you include the summer. We bring in people for summer camps.
What percentage of those are, you know, in school or below twenty years old?
Below twenty years old?
Yeah.
Maybe half. We have a, probably the other half are people without a second jobs, or we are the second job, they have other jobs.
Uh-huh.
And, you know, we have seven, seven full-time people, so.
Again, at that time of our meeting a month ago, I asked for some, you know, specific information about our staff, our part-time staff, so we could make a judgment. But my observation, and just seeing who's here in the evenings, and at the recreation center over on New Hampshire Avenue and around, it seems like we have a lot of people who are over twenty years old, which tells me maybe they're not students, and if the, if the idea is that we're having thirty people who are working at the same time, and we only need them for nineteen and a half hours, then that's one issue. But if in fact, we're working people at different schedules, so that we can keep our staff below the magic twenty hours that's going to kick in benefits, then I have a problem with that. I think that, that we should be attentive to the people who work for us. I think it's helpful to treat them as we would want, and if we were starting out with a young family, and having job, to have full-time job with benefits, would be very meaningful. And I think that's information that this council should be able to look at before we decide on this budget. What would that cost us to do that? Obviously, or maybe not obviously, but it seems to me that there might be, it might be impossible to say that you're going to take all these people, you know, thirty people working nineteen and a half hours, and be able to do the same job with fifteen people working full-time. That may not be possible because of scheduling and things like that. But I would hope that you could come back with a number saying that we could have not just two people going full-time, but there could be, you know, this is what we could do with full-time people, how we could staff the program, and be able to pay people a full-time salary, and with benefits. And, you know, I may be the first one on the council to gag when I see the number, but I think, I think it's important that we at least consider that, and not just depend on Sam Walmart to tell us how to staff our recreation department. And this leads me into the next money issue, and that is the scholarship program. I appreciate that we're still doing scholarships. I know in years gone by, we did, our scholarship program was basically, I think, run on an honor system. Where if someone, you know, claimed the hardship, and that they could not sign up for the program because of the money, then we didn't question them, we didn't ask them to fill in a form of how much are you making, and where do you work, but we trusted their judgment that they couldn't pay for it. And, and what I'm, what I hear now from people is, they're not, not objecting to filling in a form, but what I'm hearing is that they can't afford programs at the rec department, and it's like, well, they have a scholarship program, but they don't want to talk about that, they don't want to go into that system. And I suspect this because of having to provide financial information to the city. And I wonder if, in the process of trying to fix something that wasn't broken, if we've in fact maybe broken the system that was working. And again, I, it's not, it's not a criticism of what you've done, or I'm not even sure that that happened under your leadership, it may have been prior to you, but I think the, I think there are people who are not participating in the programs now, because they're not willing to work with the way the scholarship system works now, and I'm not, and I don't perceive that the old one was broken. So I don't know, if you want to comment on that, or?
What I would say is, we did try the honor system, and, you know, after a couple of years, it became evident that it was being abused, I would say, by probably not a lot of people, but enough that it was really straining our budget. And, you know, we don't have a scholarship budget, so really, it's a non-revenue. And when I was producing numbers at that time for the budget, it became clear that a lot of people were taking advantage of it. When we, which would be fine, except it wasn't clear that the need was there. So we did, and actually, I think the council had asked me to put something together a little more formal. So we do request, and I remember expressing discomfort at the time, at wanting to get involved with people's tax forms, but that's where we are. And I would say that it probably does dissuade some people. I have no way of knowing how many, or how much money is involved. We've been very willing to work with people on payment plans, you know, year-round, to help a little bit each week. We have gotten a large number of requests from people just outside our borders, and you will be pleased to know that none of those people have received scholarships. But we do get a lot of requests, and so I think, you know, to answer your question, there might be some hybrid in between, that might work better for people. I know the county has a fairly complicated system, and my goal is always to keep it as simple as possible for everybody, the applicant, as well as us to administer. And I would, I mean, we can take a look at what other communities are doing, if there's a better way to do it.
I'm not even sure that that's the answer, what other communities are doing, but if you could at least take a look at it, and see how this council might change our earlier decision, and do something better.
We can put up some options.
And I also appreciate Councilmember Clay's suggestion of scholarship donations, and things like that. One of the things, and this is more about the community center than it is about the recreation department, and I'm not sure where the line divides there. It's like when I talk about the computer learning center, technology center, the, you know, the librarian, am I allowed to use that word anymore? We have media center people now. But the, you know, the librarian says, well, that's a recreation department issue, and then, so I'm not sure where these lines are all drawn in our, in our building. But, you know, I went down to the Long Branch Community Center a couple of weeks ago, and I just sat in the lobby for a while, to see what the place looks like, and how it feels. And, you know, it really felt like, real warm and greeting, and really a lot of community. I mean, they had three bulletin boards there, with places for people to post notes, they had little boxes there for people to have flyers that you could pick up and take. You know, people walked in the front door, and they were greeted by the person at the desk with a, with a real welcoming hello, and a smile, and they had a nice little box there for people to come in, who were, you know, already signed into the center, they have an ID card, they could just scan past the little meter and go on into the center. They had stuffed chairs sitting around, for people that just, like me, to just go and sit in, and plants around the building, it just felt nice and warm. And I don't get that same feeling here, and I'm not, again, I don't even know that that's part of your responsibility, but it's a, since we're talking about recreation in the community center, I think it's a time to talk about it. It's the, I think, the feel of the place, I think the tile project in the art room, and I compliment you for that, I think the tile project there, where the community made some tiles, and put on the backsplash of the counter, it adds a warmth to the room, and it also added a lot of people who participated in that project, to really, you know, feel a piece of ownership for this building. I think those kind of things really helped make, you know, the building a community center. And so I encourage you to consider to think about how we can do that, and if it isn't your responsibility for some of the other things, if you can push whoever it is to do those.
Well, we are working a little bit on that. We've talked about having a teen mural project in one of the hallways, and we're working with the Arts and Humanities Council on some different ways to make the building more friendly. I've also brought it to my recreation committee, sort of as a project, so that the committee could get in touch with community members who have perhaps an expertise, and warm the place up. We've, you know, we see a lot of people crouched in a corner with their Wi-Fi, and it seems clear to me that people would appreciate a comfortable place near a plug.
Right.
And so we, I think that, and we, I've brought it up at different meetings, I think it would be a project for several departments in the city, and we do have it on our radar.
Great, glad to hear that. You know, I forwarded, or sent several emails over the last several weeks, expressing concern with some of the management of the recreation programs, and I'm not going to go into more detail tonight about those. I think, you know, the one that was kind of the top of my list was the bus. Been very disappointed that we bought the bus, and it still is used so seldom. I think in the last three weeks, it hasn't moved more than once, and I think that wasn't the vision that the council had when we purchased the bus, and so as, as we get a little better organized, and get the programs in place, I, I mean, that bus is to bring people here to use the center, and I think there's maybe other uses of the bus that we could, we could do for the community, that would be a real asset. The, and I just wanted to mention, just a little aside, I met a fellow today that works with Phil Shapiro over in the Computer Technology Center on a part-time basis. I don't know anything about him, it's not a recommendation, but his name's Ed, and he has a CDL, Commercial Driver's License, so that might be an opportunity for you there.
I will say, we are picking up, the bus, I think, is actually booked four times this week, so the word is out, and.
It was the zero times last week that I'm still focused on, and that's not good.
Well, no, as we go forward, we knew that the heavier use would be during the summer and on weekends, we're starting to look at bringing more kids on our teen trips, we now have the capacity for more children. So we talked to the teen manager about using it on the weekends.
I want to see Councilmember Snippers' kids over here using the community center, you know, he's on the other side of town, he's got a lot of kids on the street, I want to see him over here using the community center. They don't have the same resource in their neighborhood, and that bus can do it. I'm not going to belabor the management issues, I think Councilmember Clay talked about, you know, the software, and other things, I trust you to take care of those issues. There are a couple little things that I would like to mention, that I've heard, you know, the prorating of some of the programs, I think Councilmember Clay talked about, but, you know, some people can't participate in the whole program, but they would maybe like to participate if it's something that happens three times a week, maybe they could participate two days a week, but they would like to get a prorated fee for that. Again, I think it's a software issue more than anything else, but something for you to consider. Okay? And then the other specific request that I have heard is from the people who use the art room, that, you know, it's a well-lit facility, but artists don't always want a well-lit facility, they'd like to have shadows cast, and things like that, and so they would like to have a little better control over the lighting in the room, and some portable spotlights, and they might even be willing to bring their own portable spotlights, but right now, the choice is on or off on the lights, and they're looking for something in between, if that's, if that's a reasonable request. Again, I don't know if you're the right person to bring that to.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, Councilmember Clay convinced me I was allowed to do this, so I'm going to keep on going on.
Show some respect.
I just mentioned the amusement park idea, and again, I think that goes back to the council setting the mission, but I think the focus for me is really volume. I want to see the numbers of young people participating in the programs, and so that doesn't speak necessarily to the amusement park, but it speaks to how you use the money that we're able to allocate to your department, that we want to see the numbers of people using this facility. I want to see the numbers of people using this facility being high on the list of determining which programs that you're going to do, and which programs that you're, you would like to do, but maybe can't do, because they don't get as much participation. And thinking about that, I look at the. And thinking about that, I look at the teen room, and I say, gee, that's a great facility. The kids that use it really like it, but maybe we need to think about what else we can do in that room, or do we need to buy more computers for them to use since they enjoy that so much? I don't often see people sitting there looking at the widescreen TV, so maybe we've made a, you know, I won't say a bad decision, but the wrong decision on what kids want to do in the afternoons, that maybe we could, you know, change around what we do in the room and get more kids to come in and use the facility.
Our team manager is reevaluating that situation. She actually has a proposal for how to use the room, which we're looking at, so it's going to be happening soon.
That brings to mind, when we talk about equipment, the game room, and I know, you know, I've expressed my feeling that we need to keep the equipment in better operating condition. And one of the things, again, just a suggestion, is that, you know, those kids really like this computerized dance, whatever you call them.
Dance revolution.
Yeah, dance revolution, okay. And I wonder if, you know, with the usage that we're seeing at the center now, if maybe we need to move from the home environment to an arcade quality system in there for those kinds of things.
That was the arcade quality that we had. We had the industrials, the most industrial set.
It doesn't seem like the same thing I see at Ocean City, but that's just me.
Oh, you're talking about the kind that you pay for. Yeah, those are like $12,000, $15,000 machines.
Okay.
I haven't even considered that, if you would like me to.
I want you to consider it, but that's just me, you know.
Look into it.
You know, I think that thing.
Are you suggesting that the kids that pay per use for these?
No, you can set those up that they don't require a token.
So you want one $12,000 to $15,000 machine in there?
I don't know, we have two of the others, and they stay active all the time.
I'll cost it out.
You know, I'm not, I'm not making a, you know, I'm not proposing a resolution at this point. I'm just asking if, when you look at the usage in that room, that was a very popular piece of equipment, or two pieces of equipment, that are sitting there broken now, and maybe we need to have stronger things to use. Either that, or we need to not let kids use it as much. I mean, what, it doesn't make any sense. All right, I'm off on a tangent with that, I'm sorry. The, you know, I'm the council member for Ward Four. Obviously, you're not here to serve my needs, you're here for the whole community, but we have a lot of young people in this neighborhood who participate in the Yes League. We have, and some of those young people are not so young. I mean, I think the older age on the Yes League goes up pretty old.
Eighteen.
Yeah. And we have some young men out here in the neighborhood that could probably, would like to participate in a basketball program beyond that. And I, I would like to see us having more of the basketball programs available, because I would like to see more of those young people participating in something that they really have demonstrated that they will participate in. I've been to the Yes League games, and you see, you know, a couple hundred kids in there, and they're really enjoying themselves, they, you know, they come out for that. And I would like to see how we can do it on a, on an expanded schedule. And I would also ask, and it seems fair, but, you know, the county has a basketball league for young people. And maybe they're the ones that ought to be coming in here and running a basketball program, because we are tax-paying members of this county. And, or as an alternative, maybe we should be, you know, Tacoma Park's got the best basketball players in the county, maybe we should be competing with them in their program. So I would just like to see that basketball program expanded significantly. And this council can later talk about how we're going to get you more gym space to do it. You do have priority for these school gyms.
Or money.
Okay. It's money well served, and we can argue about that later. The computer training, and this is one that I, it's like a marshmallow, I don't know whether it's a library program or a rec program, but there is a, appears to be a need in the community for a computer training of how to use the software. Our computer facility is used a lot, but right now they're only doing training for senior programs. And there are a lot more people who would like to have some computer training, both in the use of the software and in the use of Internet and other things. And I'm already trying to bring some of that to our neighborhood outside of the rec department, but I would certainly like to have those nonprofits, organizations work with you, if that's something you're interested in. The seniors, as Councilmember Clay said, are really, you know, use this facility, they benefit from it, but I think there's a whole lot more seniors that could be coming here. And again, you know, the outreach and the bus service is so important with that. And then one last thing I just want to mention, you know, with all the young adults that we have along the street here and the concern that the community has with them kind of hanging out on the street corners or on the walls in front of the apartment buildings, I suggested a couple of weeks ago that maybe the little plaza over here to the right side of our door over top of the, where's Councilmember Barry when I'm needing the drive-in teller? The, is an area that's not used at all, I don't think. And I just wonder if we couldn't have a space there for the young people to hang out. We would probably need some supervision of that area, should we do that, and we might need some minimal facility with some benches, things like that, but just food for thought. But the goal is to have things for the young people to do and places for them to go to gain their interest rather than some of the things they gain on their own. Other than that, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of things I want to raise on a, most of them are more general. First, I want to say that my personal feeling is that the council's role is to provide feedback from residents that you might not get otherwise. So I, in fact, I appreciate Councilmember Clay's desire to improve the programs and customer service of recreation. I think that's a, comes out of that legitimate desire, and I support that. A general comment I have is, I think, for me, I would love our recreation programs to take advantage of what's unique about Tacoma Park as much as possible. So if I were, if I were trying to give you direction, it would be, when you have a choice between two things to do, you think about that as a decision tool. There are plenty of trip camps in Montgomery County. My kids went on several of them, that had just the same kind of, you know, trips to the, you know, day trips and so on as Tacoma Park has. And so it's not a, for me, it's not a unique, it's not a unique thing. On the issue of sort of cost recovery versus sort of the general public good kind of, or subsidy idea, I mean, I, we don't charge, you know, the police department doesn't go around and charge for each time you make a call or each time there's an incident, we don't charge, or, you know, for street repair, it's all part of the general taxes. And I feel, in general, that's how I view recreation as well, as a public good to the community. I did check with Bruce there, who told me that it's been the council's policy to, in general, have seniors and youth get a discount, as it were, more or less, and that other people pay the full price in quotes. And I can, I can see that as a guiding principle. When I looked at the chart you have for expenditures and revenues, I, in fact, support the general result that you, the general budget result that you are proposing here, with the caveat, perhaps, that the community centered align could be brought up, the revenue could be brought up a little bit in some fashion. But I think the general lay of the land that you have in this, in this chart is, from my point of view, a good one. With the issue about transportation, Councilmember Siemens took away my point there, which is, of course, that certain parts, certain parts of Tacoma Park are pretty far away from the community center. My ward in particular is a good hike. I walk it regularly, but I wouldn't expect, in the middle of summer, a mother or a family to send their eight-year-old hiking in July off to the community center, back and forth. So I do think that in addition to pickup and drop-off of seniors, I would like to see, and I've heard this from people in my ward, some additional transportation for younger kids in particular. And while we're on the younger kids idea, or issue, I think one of the ways you get teens involved in programs is that they are involved in programs when they're younger. And they see, I know this is what happened to me and my friends, you get used to going to someplace, and then you look forward to doing the bigger kid things, the teen things, when you, when you get to that age. So I think if we just try to target teens, we'll be less successful than if we take a longer-term perspective and say, look, the programs that are for younger kids, middle school kids and so on, will naturally mean that we will get an increase in teens. So if we have good programs for those middle school kids, we're likely to draw in the teens, because they're used to coming, their parents are used to sending them there, they have, their friends will be there, they'll have those kinds of connections, they'll know the, they'll know the staff. And I think we have a good staff. Frankly, I have the same impression that the other council members have, that the staff has improved greatly in the last little while, and I'm very impressed with that. The one additional thing I would say about a recreation program that I would like to see, and I've heard this from people in Ward Five, is a little bit more focus on mentoring. One of the things that was raised by, I believe it was Councilmember Clay, was the idea of doing a little development of younger kids through counselors and training, or some similar kind of way of involving 14-year-olds, 13-year-olds, 15-year-olds, in a way that allows them to see that, when they grow up, being the next famous basketball star isn't the only route to success. That here in Tacoma Park, we have a community that's full of people doing really interesting work. You know, our neighbors are, to me, great role models for our kids, if the kids knew what they were doing. We have people doing all kinds of things, whether it's nurses at our hospital, teachers in the, in the two colleges within Tacoma Park. We've got everyone from people who work for the city and are doing good things, or for the police departments, or the, you know, nonprofit organizations, there's tons of them in Tacoma Park. And these folks are, could be role models for our youth in a way that would counteract some of this, oh, I have to be, you know, I'm only going to shoot for the next great football player or the next great basketball player. You know, most of these kids aren't going to be that. And they need to understand that the world around them in Tacoma Park is full of cool people who are doing really interesting, important things. And I think that the rec department is a way of, in a sense, showing kids, they see your staff, you know? They see your staff and they say, wow, these are, these are really cool people, I could do that. You know, and I think that's a great, a great source for kids. And I think we should think about that, is my point. Think about that a little bit, of how do we even a bit more mentoring. I want to work, I've started talking to Columbia Union College about getting the students there more involved in mentoring in the community, in my ward in particular. And I want to talk to you at some point about seeing if recreation could help coordinate some of those activities. I'm not expecting that you would do the activities, but a little bit of the coordination, provide meeting space or materials, ideas for how to do it, that kind of thing. The last thing I want to say is something that occurred to me while we were chatting, which is, I was in, as I said, I was away in California this weekend, and one of the community projects they had there that I thought would be really interesting here. I've noticed in the community center, a lot of lovely art, and each week it's different. It's really quite good. I mean, I have just been so impressed with the artists that are there. And I really believe that the teens, the youth in our community, or even the seniors for that matter, or other folks who come to the programs and do art, might benefit from an organized auction of some of their artwork, that they might pick something that they have done, and that the rec department might, I don't know whether this is legally possible or whatever, but might consider running an auction for some of that artwork, because quite frankly, if it's anything like the artwork that's been up month, a week after week in the community center so far, I think we could actually sell quite a bit of it to the people in the community who'd be interested in supporting local young artists. And I'll stop there.
I think we've covered everything. Do we have anything else that anybody wants to bring up before we let the folks in the recreation department go? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We, it sounds like from some of the questions from the council that we may have to have some additional discussions, but I think this will be it for the budget time, but we'll follow up on some of these additional topics.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your interest.
Sarah, housing.
Sarah's coming up to the table to make some general comments. The Housing and Community Development Department operating budget is, as proposed, is up by about $107,000 of that amount. About 43% is personnel, probably more so than any other budget that we're presenting. The HCD budget is largely driven by a lot of the council priorities that you adopted a little over a year ago. Included in your agenda packet, I think it's a very good overview from Sarah, kind of highlighting how her budget reflects the advancement of those priorities. I think the three specific areas that Sarah's department focuses on are going to be affordable housing, the revitalization of the New Hampshire Avenue corridor, and just sort of promoting appropriate development in all areas of the city. I did ask Sarah, just in the interest of time, I realize it is getting late, certainly she's available to answer any questions, but there were a few areas that I asked Sarah if she could just sort of touch on and highlight, either due to the amount of money that is involved, or just because I think there might be areas that in particular the council is interested in. So with that, I turn it over to Sarah.
Good evening. I was going through the list of things that we've done this past year, and since we've been before the council over 125 times, I figure you probably know a lot about what we do. As Barb indicated, included in your agenda packet is just a memo that briefly summarizes some of the activities that we have planned and have an impact on our budget for FYO aid, that have a direct bearing on the council priorities that were, excuse me, identified by the city council over the last 18 months. And just to touch on some of the bigger ticketed items, if you will, the Affordable Housing Home Ownership Initiative as a whole is about $64,000, and that includes several very successful programs, including the Capacity Building Program, the revolving loan fund, which we have been able to assist two different, currently two different tenant associations to provide them with the seed money they need to further explore the feasibility of the purchase of their property, a variety of educational programs, and then promotion of the Property Tax Credit Program. On the next page, the Target Enforcement Initiative is something that may be new to many of you. We're sort of testing it out a little bit before we come and tell you. We're sort of testing it out a little bit before we come and tell you about it. But basically, if you recall, when we were going through and doing the council priorities, one of the things that you budgeted for us this year was enough funding to hire a new code enforcement inspector. Mr. Eddie Latham started with us at the beginning of the year and has just been wonderful. He's an inspector's inspector. And because of the, the work that he's done to help us get through some of the backlog that we've realized over the last couple of years, we've been able to start something that we're calling a Targeted Enforcement Initiative, where basically we're going out and being more proactive in the various wards, initially to sort of identify those hidden gems that people have known about for years but haven't complained to us about, and then eventually to deal with more smaller property nuisance complaints that can develop over time into something that's much larger and becomes a real nuisance in the community. The way the program is structured right now, and we're testing it again for a little bit to see how it works, is that on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we have the inspector go out for the morning and alternating on afternoons on some of the days, and driving through to check out wards one and three on Mondays, two and four on Wednesdays, and five and six on Fridays, just to kind of cruise the neighborhood, if you will, pick up problems that have not been identified by the residents. And so we can sort of get a heads up on it and start working to address those problems. So while it's a very small amount in the budget, it's going to be a focus of the code enforcement offices now as well as next year. Piggybacking into that too is the vacant abandoned and neglected properties initiative that we had talked about previously. And that was one of the outcomes of the surveys that we're continuing to do of all the properties in the community. We've made it through about, let's say, forty percent of the properties in Tacoma Park in terms of just doing a cursory or a windshield survey to identify what the property is used for and rating it as far as it's fine to, we've got to get somebody out here right now to come out and do an inspection. So between those two initiatives, we're touching base with the community and the properties in the various wards on a more proactive and more one-on-one basis, if you will. That's not exactly the right word, but we're out in the neighborhood a lot more than we had been.
Can I ask about Targeted Enforcement Initiative? At one point, we had people at Code Enforcers initiating code violation tickets. And we had a huge backlash in the community against people sort of riding around, sort of writing up code violations where the neighbors didn't care and the owners were very upset that this isn't, we're not repeating that, right?
We are being discreet about it. What we have come up with, and I still have to get printed, is something called a courtesy notice. And basically, it's a door hanger with a top twelve popular code violations. Everything from the grass is a little tall to there's a dead tree in your front yard to please shovel your sidewalk kind of thing. And just to give people the heads up that, you know, they may not have noticed it, they may not have known it was a problem or against the law, just to sort of give them an opportunity to be aware of the situation and to correct the problems. We had talked about the challenges that were faced in the past where inspectors became very aggressive about things. And basically, the sense that we got from the council was that you wanted us to be, you want us to be out in the neighborhood, you wanted us to be as proactive as possible. And at this point in time, I haven't had anybody complaining. Well, everybody always complains about code enforcement, but nothing more than out of the ordinary. And frankly, the properties that we're getting complaints from the property owners, I'm surprised nobody's called them in because they are, I brought some pictures along, but I left them upstairs. I mean, these are properties where the roofs are falling and the porch is no longer attached to the front of the house. And even if it's not problematic for the neighbors, it is a safety issue and has an impact on the, on the neighborhood as a whole. So we're trying not to make people angry, but there will always be a couple.
May I ask a question?
Uh huh.
You mentioned that your scheduler, and I forget, you said like Wednesday was Ward 4?
I believe Wednesday is Ward 4.
Does he inspect all properties or including the apartment buildings or just single-family homes?
Right now, the, the way it's structured is that Mr. Latham or Mrs. Saco will go through and drive through the neighborhood. And there may be areas where they get out and walk, but they sort of drive through to identify properties where there are concerns or potential challenges, and then they'll get out and inspect it. Because of the inspection authority that we have, we do it all from the grounds. We don't go into the individual rental facilities. If there is a rental property where from the exterior it looks as though there's a problem, we will refer that to the county. If there's an issue that we've identified that is more appropriately addressed by the police department, it will be referred to the police department. Same thing for any public works-related infractions. But basically, it's what we can see from the public right-of-way on the outside of that property.
Okay, so, so even if it was a high-rise apartment and you saw trash outside the dumpster, they would write something like that up?
We would contact the county and refer them over and they would go out and do the inspection.
The reason I ask is there's only, I think, sixty single-family homes in Ward 4. And if it was primarily focused was a single-family home, it seems like the guy's got a vacation on Saturday.
No, 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 he's working really hard. It's not just single-family properties, it's commercial properties, vacant lots. If we see something in the city park or county park that's a problem, we will make the appropriate referral to those agencies. I've also included in the to-do list of things to try to accomplish while we're out driving around is to pull down flyers from telephone poles, which are blight and against the law, to pull up those infernal signs that are stuck in the boulevard that don't belong there. Now, I don't care how popular the karate summer camp might be, it doesn't belong there. So we'll be pulling that stuff up too.
I think this council may want to talk about at some point what we're doing and what codes we're enforcing, how we're going about. I mean, I, I think in our neighborhood of some properties that, that you and I might, technically might be in violation of the code, but I don't hear a lot of complaints from the neighbors about it, so.
And that's part of the discretionary aspect of it. If it's something that's pretty, back when I had a yard, you know, you could have probably cited me a couple of times for overgrown lawns because I don't like mowing my lawn. There are going to be situations like that.
I did cut down my bamboo, I just want to make it.
That's very good. But situations like that where we get the courtesy notice, just to give people the heads up. If they ignore it, or they're really become, it becomes more and more of an issue, then we'll go through the whole violation notice, issuing a citation, taking people to court. But frankly, that's not our goal. Our goal is to increase people's awareness of the property maintenance code laws and to tie this also into the be a good neighbor kind of initiative that we're hoping to get started soon in July, in terms of giving people information about what it means to be a good neighbor in Tacoma Park. What are the community norms as far as trash in your yard and how many inoperable vehicles you have in your yard and, you know, things like that.
Yeah, I just think it's a, it can be a double-edged sword. What is it to be a good government too?
Right.
We all need to get along and that.
Yeah. And we're trying to marry wards based on the size of the ward from a geographical standpoint as well as historically where we've tended to see a lot of complaints coming in. So we may not get a lot in Ward 4, but we may get a lot in Ward 12, you know? So it kind of balances it up like that. So that's, those are some of the more significant initiatives, if you will, for the affordable housing priority. New Hampshire Avenue, as many of you are aware of, we've been spending a lot of time and staff energy on that. Some of the larger projects that will be planned for FYO8 is to do a design charrette for the Maryland Gateway, which is at Eastern and New Hampshire Avenue, very similar to which, that which you recently approved for Ethan Allen and New Hampshire Avenue. And that's basically a community-driven consensus-based design for that area that we can use to market the corridor and the, to targeted redevelopers or to, or developers or to the property owners in terms, here's, here's a possibility that the community endorses this particular type of a project, which will save them time and give them a better sense of what, better, more expectations based more on reality than what the zoning ordinance might allow as far as maximum height or density development. We're also looking at doing a fairly aggressive outreach and marketing program, everything from a market study that is a little undefined as yet. And frankly, I want to wait to see what happens with the design charrette over at Ethan Allen and New Hampshire Avenue, because there'll be some market information that's generated as a result of that effort. And I'm hoping that'll give us a better sense of whether or not we need to do a retail leakage survey, if we need to do something that more clearly identifies the resources that are available in the community and how people are spending their money and what the gaps might be. We're also looking at doing some smaller types of marketing and promotion things, be it video, which highlights businesses along New Hampshire Avenue corridor, but it could also tie into other businesses in the community. And to do a more economic development kind of website, if you will, providing a lot of the demographic and market information that we collect as well as giving people sort of a sense of what the possibilities and the opportunities are here in Tacoma Park, either to expand or to relocate in the community. Our restaurant guide has been very successful and we're looking at doing another run of that. And again, some, just some miscellaneous marketing materials and looking at doing some gateway signage. I think, so that's the largest expenditure under the New Hampshire Avenue Corridor Initiative. Under the general development, this project that may be of most interest are the commercial area improvements that we've budgeted $65,000. And I believe that's in the capital improvement program. Many of you had, well, we had many master plan workshops at the various commercial nodes throughout the community. And Flower and Honey Branch, for example, Sherman and Maple Avenue, up on New Hampshire Avenue, et cetera. And as a part of that process, we were asked the community to identify projects, small projects, that they felt would enhance the attractiveness of the area, make it more pedestrian-friendly, make it a place more inviting for them and for others to frequent. And those range from everything from we need more trash cans to it'd be nice to have some benches, or we really need some landscaping, or please give that guy some money to replace the tattered overhang on his building. It's not a significant amount of money if you look at the various places where it could be spent, but we think it will have at least an initial impact. And we'll continue to work with the council and the community in terms of identifying other small improvements that could be done. We're in the process right now of consolidating all of the feedback that we receive from the community and working with the Public Works Department to see what can be done from a practical standpoint in terms of the timing and the funding that may be available, particularly for the projects that would involve a larger capital expenditure. So we can stage it and then use that information that we gather during these community meetings to justify grant applications or other funding, explore other funding. Which if you've written a grant, that's one of the things I always ask you about, what's the community involvement and the input? How have you identified this need? So those are the bigger things in our budget. Do you have any questions or is there something you'd like me to clarify?
Any questions from the council?
No questions, I just want to say thank you for everything that you do. I think sometimes, you know, Housing and Community Development's a quiet area, but your staff's getting more and more known in the community. People ask me questions about Alana Blanchard and David Sewell's. And earlier this week, Moses Wilds was helping one of my constituents who is in a rental housing property, single-family, that has a lot of issues. And she came over to talk to me about it and went on and on about how great he was, how friendly and helpful he was, what a terrific resource he was. Even though every answer he gave her wasn't the answer that she necessarily wanted.
That happens to us a lot.
She said that she just really appreciated that there was somebody there at the city to provide her with help and support. And, and he really made her feel like somebody was listening to her and would help her with her problems. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, I'll pass those remarks on. From my perspective, I have a wonderful staff. I mean, they're really very conscientious and hardworking and do a good job.
Thank you. I just was struck by your early comments about how many times you've been here to the council meetings.
It's tiring.
But it's, it's greatly appreciated. And I think when I contrast what I know about what's going on in your department and kind of the questions I have at this point in time to what my knowledge and questions are for the Recreation Department, who was here right before, and then I look at how many times you've been here as compared to the Recreation Department, I think maybe it suggests that we should have, you know, some reports from each of the departments more frequently, not more frequently than you.
I'd be more than glad to share my airtime with anybody.
First, I want to make a general comment about the memorandum. I really support this kind of format with the council priorities listed and then the programming that's reflective or designed to speak to those along with an estimate of how much it will cost or save, in this case, its cost. Because it helps me see whether in fact we are going with our priorities exactly. It actually really comes, so I want to compliment you on that. I also want to say that I understand the, the issues around the Targeted Enforcement Initiative, but I heard a lot of comment about the need for something along those lines. And what you have outlined seems like a, a good balance between essentially focusing on an educational, informational kind of function rather than a policing ticketing function. Because I think at the initial level, that's the place to start. And, and the advantage of doing these regular drive-arounds is you will identify the so-called problem places. This, the, you know, the occasional house that lets their lawn get, get too long is not necessarily a problem. You know, it's the one where the big tree is lying across the sidewalk for weeks on end and they haven't done a thing about it, kind of stuff, that's, that's the problem. And you will get to know the difference between it when your staff is going around like that. So I really support that. It was one of the things I heard from constituents that they did not, they, they felt that housing was reactive and not proactive. So I really support this. And the last thing I want to say is I really appreciate the conversation we had earlier this evening about, I'll call it landlord education for short, because while I, I don't have a lot of landlords that live in my ward, those that I talked to were surprisingly uninformed about not only what the law was, which surprised me a lot, but also just how to kind of run a, essentially a small business in an efficient way that would generate enough income for them. There were landlords who were in fact doing a fine job on that and really understood. And I got a lot of really interesting ideas from them about how to run a successful landlord business kind of thing. And I kind of wished I could have taken them along with me when I talked to what turned out to be a fair number of landlords who really didn't know how to do it. I've been a landlord myself and I know that the laws are complicated, the tax laws are complicated and so on, but it is, it is possible to, to do this. And so I really appreciate the efforts that housing is doing on this. And I was glad to hear about them, you really answered my concerns then earlier tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say how much I appreciate the increase in proactivity that I've seen from your department in terms of initiatives about the, kind of the, the master plan, commercial area updates and going out and soliciting input from residents and businesses. The, the thorough way in which you all have dealt with some potential development projects in the city and some of the initiatives that you've got outlined in the, in the memo here. and some of the initiatives that you've got outlined in the memo here, the, I would say it's your department that I hear, the resident requests for information and questions and difficulties, and it tends to be, you know, there's sporadic little surges for concerns about public safety, and there's always some public works questions, but the ones that really kind of get people's juices flowing, and the ones that bring out the crowds for neighborhood meetings, and the ones that are of continuing, ongoing concern, tend to always end up in your shop. And the, the long-term ability to attract businesses and keep our business areas vibrant, and the concerns about neighborhood problems in terms of properties, all those kinds of issues, code enforcement, all of it, I've seen a real step up in terms of the ability to be a couple steps ahead of things and provide lots of information when I come in with what I think might be a request that you'd need to do some research on, and you immediately have a whole lot of information that I might not have been aware of, and that the residents might not have been aware of. So it's really helpful to see the format that you've put this memo for areas that there's some initiatives on, and I think your department's been doing a great job.
Thank you.
Well, it's already been said by a couple people, but I want to say it also, that I also appreciate the format, and maybe the city manager can think of that, about that as a way of sort of doing for other departments, to sort of focus on specific projects grouped by area under the council's priorities, because I think that's a very useful way of looking at things.
No, I appreciate the feedback. I think the reality is with the five priority areas that the council identified, quite frankly, they pretty much tie to either HCD or general government, in terms of those that have specific implementation plans, certainly as we move forward. You know, there's some other areas that the council is interested in, but these were the five areas that Cross Miss Daines Department, as well as my own, where there actually are specific implementation plans that we report back to the council on a regular basis on.
I think, and I very much appreciate that, I think the format of sort of doing it by groups of expenditure categories, and then explaining what is under that category, I found helpful, even if it's not necessarily a priority, but obviously which ones are in the priorities was helpful, too. I wanted to just follow up a little bit about the Targeted Enforcement Initiative. I'm not, I don't think that it's necessarily a bad thing, and I appreciate what you were saying about using discretion. Clearly, if somebody's lawn is overgrown, and there's other problems with the property, and it's boarded up, and they, clearly that's a problem. And I assume that we're not going to buy somebody a ticket or even give them a notice every time their lawn gets over whatever number of inches it is, and I think that was the kind of thing that was generating the negativity the last time around, and I agree with, I don't remember who said it, but as people go around, they'll sort of see which properties have ongoing problems, and which one maybe somebody was out of town for a week and let their lawn grow too long, and, you know, they'll use their discretion in a way that is positive for the neighborhood, and not sort of do it sort of isolated from other things that will have people who normally are very conscientious about their properties in here waving tickets for a 10 and 1/2 inch lawn. So I appreciate that, thank you. Anything else? Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, my name, just a reminder that the Communications Department and the Police Department are coming up on Thursday. I've not had any specific requests from council members for certain information, but if there is something that you're looking for, if you could either please let me know now, or first thing in the morning, because our plan is tentatively to try to get your agenda packet out late afternoon tomorrow for Thursday night's meeting.
And the other thing that we're going to try and do on Thursday is try and get on the table anything that hasn't previously been mentioned that council members want to put on the reconciliation list. So if there's anything that has not been discussed, but you want to get it on the list, we'd really like to get it on the list by Thursday, so the staff has some chance to gather some information on it before we do final reconciliation. Anything else? If not, we're adjourned.